And Counselor Dr. Keen is out traveling. So if you'd like to, to join me, I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then we'll welcome Pastor Eric Lohe from the Crossroads Church to lead us in an invocation and we'll open our meeting. So rise and join me, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you and let us pray. God, a long time ago, you spoke to a man named Jeremiah and you said these words. Seek the peace and prosperity of the city to which I have placed you. Pray to the Lord for it because if it prospers, you too will prosper. And so we gather here, God, continuing to pray for the prosperity of this city than which you have placed us. And we pray tonight for these leaders who continue to make decisions that affect the conditions in which we live and have an impact on the families, churches, and workplaces and businesses that are here. And so tonight, we continue to pray that you guide their thoughts as they sense your guidance, as they deal with things that come upon them because of the growth in this city and also because of the things that we choose for the goodness and growth of this city. God, leadership sometimes can be a daunting task, seeking to know what's best for the immediate time, as well as to be able to think about what's best for the future. We pray, God, for your continued watch care over this city, that all will be done with goodness in mind and integrity that stands above all. We pray that you would watch over the many visitors that continue to come here and will come to Westfield this summer and pray that as those long ago felt a welcome here in Westfield from the south, may the many visitors who come from now all over find a great sense of a Westfield welcome. We pray, God, for the safety of our first responders and for the lives who serve our city so well and in so many ways. And we pray for them because they recognize the greatness of their task and because we are grateful for their willingness to lead. It affects the lives of many. And we thank you for these leaders and for the many in this city that serve us and benefit all those who are in this community. We give you thanks, God, for who you are and are grateful for our lives.
Thank you. Call the meeting to order. Would you please note the presence of a quorum?
Steve Hoover?
Here.
Bob Horkey?
Here.
Cindy Speljeric?
Here.
Joe Edwards?
Here.
Jim Ake?
Here.
Chuck Lehman?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I am not aware of any changes to the agenda, so it will stand as presented. Our first item will be the consideration of the minutes from the meeting of June 13th. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion to approve, second by Mr. Hoover. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any guests that wish to speak to the council on items not on the agenda? Any cards?
No cards.
Thank you. Next item will be claims. We have a claims docket. Is there a motion regarding the claims, please?
Move to approve claims as stated.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We have no special presentations this evening, so we'll move on to old business. And the first item is Ordinance 16-17 to establish a RDA. This was introduced on the 13th and was circulated for consideration and tonight is up for adoption consideration. Brian, you want to cover any details or only if, as necessary?
I'll answer any questions. I've received none since it was introduced two weeks ago.
Mr. Chairman, I have some questions. I'd like to ask the counselor the advantages of this as opposed to the system. Well, we're using the system. The council borrows the money. This would be the redevelopment authority borrowing the money now. What are the advantages?
One, this entity is authorized to do business with the Redevelopment Commission. And it was created by statute to work in tandem with the Redevelopment Commission. At the time, we were doing this financing. One of the major concerns we had was not to impact the constitutional debt limit of the city. This would not go on the debt limit of the city where any loan that the council would take out would. It would be a general obligation debt. This would be tied to the funds that would be acquired through the bond and then serviced by the plan or the Redevelopment Commission. I keep wanting to say authority instead of commission.
What's the difference between commission and authority? The commission is downtown.
The Redevelopment Commission is an entity we have right now that establishes economic redevelopment areas and maintains TIF districts. A redevelopment authority is a special, different kind of an entity that, as I stated, works in tandem with the Redevelopment Commission. Now, when we were faced with the opportunity to take the bonds, the bands, rather, the bond anticipation notes which are coming due this year, we have to turn that into a long-range bond, long-range loan. If we did it through the council, it would impact our debt limit because it would be general obligation. If the redevelopment authority takes out bonds, or in this case, yeah, the redevelopment authority would be the leasing entity for this transaction up at Grant Park. And it would be paid through TIF funds and not through the general obligation. So it wouldn't hit the statutory debt limit of the city. It would work in tandem with the Redevelopment Commission. It would allow for us to do this bonding in much the same way as a building corporation, but a little more streamlined. So actually, the choices we had were to either bond this through a building corporation or develop a redevelopment authority to do the same thing.
I had a question there and it escaped me. The other thing is, are these notes then off the books, so to speak?
As far as the constitutional debt limit, yes.
But in reporting our obligations to the general public, are they still a part of that amount?
They would be listed under the Redevelopment Commission and the Redevelopment Authority.
Well, the reason I bring this up, as you know, our neighbor to the south has had quite a tussle over this. And there was, it looks like the authority of the city council of our neighbor to the south was kind of overran by the redevelopment authority or commission or whatever, whichever agency it was. We would have to, I mean, it looks to me like we're giving up some power in doing this and oversight because we don't have any, we don't, I've read through this several times, and we don't have any, we don't originate the notes or the bonds. They do, they do, excuse me, I keep hitting that thing.
I'm not sure if I mentioned it two weeks ago or not, but the, as I said, to avoid the constitutional debt limit, we had two choices. One was a building corporation and the other one was a redevelopment authority.
I wasn't here that time.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, you weren't. The redevelopment authority, which would be created by this ordinance, differs in the building commission or building corporation by a couple of things. One of which is, before it can take out any loans or enter into leases, it has to get approval from the council.
For each action?
Yes. Not every action they take, but to become indebted, yes.
For each indebted?
A building corporation would not have to do that.
So the authority has to come to us and say, we're going to do this, do you approve? If they issue a note, is this correct?
Yes.
Okay.
You will have a yes or no vote on whether that financing goes through.
That's good. What about condemnation proceedings, the same way?
They're authorized to undertake condemnation proceedings, as is the Redevelopment Commission.
Okay. But they wouldn't have to come to us to do that?
No.
Okay.
On a condemnation? I don't think so because they can condemn in the name of the Redevelopment Commission.
Well, you've cleared up something. If they have to come back to us to actually borrow the money, we'll know what that is then.
Oh, absolutely. I don't believe you've been here when the Redevelopment Commission has started bonding, but it goes through several phases, one of which is through here.
I would be real uncomfortable if they didn't do that.
I think a lot of the changes, and Matt mentioned other changes, and there will be more changes July 1st, are all due to some abuses of this financing that's been available for some time.
It looks like it could be easily abused if you weren't careful. I mean, if...
Much less so now.
Well, the appointments all come from one body that is not this body, so I mean, that's where our concern lies.
Yeah, they're all mayoral. There's three members that are appointed by the mayor. They serve for a set three-year term.
But they're kind of, we have the, kind of the whip hand on them as far as they're borrowing money.
You have the authority to approve it or not approve it?
Or disapprove, okay. That's my question.
I didn't want to say you had a whip hand on them.
Well, that's not a proper, we have the ability to approve or disapprove.
Yes, sir.
Those are Quaker terms there, approval or disapproval.
Brian, this is a similar question a little bit. They also have the ability to employ managers, superintendents, architects, engineers, attorneys, blah, 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 for the construction of local public improvements or improvements to them. Again, would something like that require our authorization?
Only the bonding that would give them the funds to do it.
Okay.
So when the bonding, let's reference a bond. They're going to do a bond to consolidate some debt. The number, whatever that is, will include a lot of those things that you just mentioned. Of course, the underwriting, the architecture, the engineering, and the professional services that are included. So when you approve it, you're approving the entire package. But you won't get claims, you won't see the individual claims as a body, but they're all going to be posted and they're all public documents.
They're subject to audit by the State Board of Accounts.
Oh, absolutely. And the funds all run through the clerk's office.
Is there a motion on Ordinance 16-17, please?
Move to approve Ordinance 16-17, establish a redevelopment authority pursuant to the Indiana Code 36-7-14.5-7, repeal all ordinances inconsistent with it.
Is there a second? Any other comments? I would note that Counselor Edwards, I agree with, I understand your concern, but this is a different, this is a different IC code, so we do have some safeguards.
You can say whip hand if you wish.
Pardon me?
You can say whip hand if you wish.
Whatever. It is what it is. It's just not, it's not the same, so I'm pretty comfortable with it. Okay, motion is to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to Ordinance 16-18, alcohol beverage permits. This item was introduced on June 13th. There was some discussion, questions. I think Matt has done a good job explaining that. It's up for adoption consideration this evening. I would entertain a motion and we'll open it for discussion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Ake. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Joe. Matt, is there anything you want, or let's do this, any counselors have any questions on this? I think it's been discussed, the information has been posted and so forth.
One thing, if I might, I appreciate the language in Section 4 with the review committee now outlining who is on that. And the one suggestion I had beyond that was to include the address of where to send this stuff because right now it just says, send it to this review committee, but there's nothing to say where that goes, so.
One of the things that's included in the ordinance is the ability to change those forms, and that will be a moving target as to where those meetings are going to be set up once the board's been filled and we know where they're going to be and who specifically will be handling the applications.
I think she was commenting where they would actually apply it. You can just put that in the application.
Any other questions, comments? Motion to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving to Ordinance 16-21, City of Westfield to allocate low-end funds, creation of Fund 257. Again, this was introduced on the 13th. It's up for adoption consideration this evening. Is there a motion on this ordinance, please?
Move to approve Ordinance 16-21, City of Westfield to allocate low-end funds and creation of Fund 257.
Second.
Motion is second. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Ordinance 16-22, establishing an internal control. Again, this was introduced on the 13th. It's up for adoption consideration this evening. Is there a motion to? Ordinance 16-22, please?
I move to approve Ordinance 16-22, establishing internal control and establishing a materiality threshold.
Second.
Thank you. The only comment I have is, this again is not, it's not a moving target, but there will maybe be some amendments or adjustments made to this, right, Brian, as we go forward a little bit possibly?
Yes, there will be. There was a deadline of July 1st to have this adopted. It was recommended by the clerk's office that we adopted in this form and attached the circular, so to speak, set out by the state.
Thank you. Motion to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. That completes our old business. We will move to new business, and that would be Resolution 16-118, reestablishing a CCD fund. This will be a council introduction tonight. It will have a scheduled public hearing on July 11th, and it will be up for adoption consideration on July 11th with some other issues or with some other conveniences. Anyway, tonight is a council introduction. It is established a CCD, a reestablishment of a CCD fund. It's been done in the past, and this is a formality of reintroduction. Are there any questions? Hearing none. That's the only item under new business. And that also concludes all of the items on our agenda for this evening. At this point, I would welcome any comments or concerns or questions from the council.
I do, if you wouldn't mind, Chuck.
You have the floor.
Thank you. I brought this up to council a little bit ago, and Melody is here, but in conjunction with the Grand Junction Derby, Janus Developmental Services is having a co-event, which should actually increase some opportunities on both ends for both organizations. And so this Janus at the Junction is going to involve food trucks, entertainment of the flying toasters, and beer garden, and other fun things like a cornhole tournament. And I'd sent out and emailed everybody with some of that information, so it's been requested that I ask our city council to become a sponsor of that event. There are different sponsorship levels and wanted to bring that up now to gauge interest. We do have a promotions budget, and I believe this will bring a lot of people in from, not only locally, but even down from Marion and the rest of Hamilton County. So I think it's going to be really good for our downtown businesses, and we'll make it so our derby is even more festive this year.
So what are the different participation levels?
The lowest is 500, and then 1,000, and then 2,500. And there's different, different things you get with that, such as VIP ticket or tickets, advertisements, those kind of things.
Cindy, you have a name?
Yes.
What you're requesting is sponsorship from the Janus partnership.
Yes, the Janus at the Junction, not your part. Right.
In support of their fundraiser for their business plan, it wouldn't go to you, but it goes to them. Just wanted to explain.
Janus is incurring substantial costs, of course, to have a lot of this stuff, and Melody is aware of the costs of doing that, which is one of the reasons I think we were going to downplay the derby this year as weather has been an issue in the past years. I know it affected attendance. We're keeping our fingers crossed for this year, of course, and we have some Janus clients. They're developmentally disabled. They are working on a car with Granger, and a lot of the families and their friends are interested in participating. So this should be a really exciting time.
What is the date?
October 1st. And the derby runs about 3:30 to 5:30?
It starts at 3 until we get things all in.
Right. And then the entertainment, the big part of the entertainment will take place after that with the flying toasters, and that will go till 8 or 8:30.
This is the Janus, this is part of the festival, it's in charge of the festival side of the event.
Any other comments?
If we have, I mean, I would not object to sponsoring if we have funds available in our promotion budget. I mean, we have sponsored events before that we thought were beneficial to the city. So I personally would not have a problem with doing that.
I agree with...
I think it'd be a good idea to do that because I don't know much about the flying toasters, but they seem to be the band of renown anymore, so they might, it might draw a good crowd. They might be a good thing.
I agree with Steve. I think we should look at our budget, and I think it deserves some level of support.
I'll be glad to bring back some information for our first meeting in July, and we can address that at that time, give you a recap on where we are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to give an update on the Advisory Plan Commission from last week. It was also a very short meeting. We had one item of business, it was Urban Vines on 161st Street Development Plan, and that was approved. So we will have a winery on 161st Street in the future.
That was brief. Just like to remind everybody, it's the 4th of July, and Westfield rocks the 4th. It's going to be awesome this year, so invite your friends, neighbors, come on out to Grant Park.
Another thing that I noted in reading the newspaper, I don't follow our high school teams real closely, but the boys' golf team won state championship this year for, I think, the third time in four years, if I'm not mistaken. So congratulations to them. That's quite an achievement.
Anyone else? Melody, anything you want to say specific to the, to the Rocks?
We opened up VIP to individual seats today. We'll have one temp, or we just want to come with the, some of the others that can do that online. Yeah, the Bird Smith, that's what we call. It's going to be grand, we're going to Grant Park, so it's going to be grand. There are 22 food vendors that are not in food, that won the bird. They will be, I mean, it's in September there as well. Bands are going to be fabulous because the titles, I think, maybe he's probably heard that play at the Mary's Ball. There are the opening act, second act, it's still in the satellites we had up four years ago. They're real high-energy, fun band. And then our titles, a headliner is the Hunter Smith Band. We're really excited about having them come out. They're just really teetering on the national level. They're opening for Lake Sheldon this summer, a couple of concerts, and one of their songs was in the soundtrack of the movie that was released in May, so we're excited about that. Kids area, both City Springs and the Manion Church are joining their forces to make that bigger and better than it's ever been before. And we didn't want to leave out the 10-year-old and up kids. So for all of you, we're going to have an archery tag area, kind of like rain, peak hall for and for. Have a time waiver, but it looks like it's going to be a lot of fun. And that goes on holiday. We have two setups for that, one for, and the hot dog eating contest. Got to sign up, get qualified. But during the break between the second and, the first and second bands, besides the fact that Dr. Drake is going to speak to the community during that break, we're also going to have a hot dog eating contest. Actually, it is on the chart. We can put down a chart or something. It's right in front of the main stage. So the car show's going to be great. I just think it's going to be a wonderful day, and right now, the temperature is, it's sunny and in the mid-eights. So city citizens have sponsored four misting stations that will help scattered around, and a lot of tents to get in and some shade. But if you haven't already made plans, come see us. We start at 4 o'clock. Fireworks. For all of you that know what the bug is, when I say the bug, you know what the bug is, right? Out of our logo. Fireworks company has reproduced that, that was part of our fireworks show. I'm so jazzed about that. So, yeah, thanks for asking.
Thank you. That concludes our business for this evening. Unless there's an objection, we will stand adjourned. Thank you all for coming. See you at Rock the 4th.
Quit paying this old farm attorney. It's an old farm.
Is it?
Yeah. And they used to use horses. When they did, I didn't. That's not my memory, but... No, I wasn't here. I thought if we give the financial control, I think that's kind of what happened. Well, I don't think I had a quorum. I think the mayor.
Absolutely. He's done a few different things with his own encodement, so he does have to deal with the council for that one. I didn't think it was going to happen. That was probably, probably give you a better, longer explanation than that. But don't think twice if you see something on the table.
Who's going, what?
Well, I read through that. It looked to me like once we kicked the authority, not the commission, and I had a little confusion about that. Because in the definition of terms, it looked like we adopted either the authority or the commission. That's only...
Yeah, and I was going to say that.
Sway over. Pretty much revenue wise, you know, maybe like TIF or leases. So we have kind of an access to the state bond bank for this kind of stuff?
There's somebody that could act.
Just one of them.
Especially when the market's doing this.
It's the same neighborhood. They ask if I know any of my neighbors.
Oh, yeah.
I'm a block away.